Good morning, everyone. I would declare a forum and call a meeting to order, and Sharon has agreed to do our prayer this morning.
Our Father, Hallowed Lord, we just come before you this morning. We thank you, Lord, for the freedoms that we have. We thank you, Lord, for the freedom that we have to meet here together. We thank you, Lord, for the freedom that we can still pray to you, Lord, that you are in charge of all of us anyway, Lord, and we just thank you for that. We thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. I pray, Lord, this morning that we would do business, county business, according to your will, and whatever you see fit for our county. And I just thank you for each one of these commissioners that are here today. Thank you for our guests. Lord, I just pray for those that are ill. I pray for this COVID, Lord. You know what's gonna happen, Lord, and we just trust you with a good outcome. Lord, we love you, and we just praise you and honor you in all that we say and do. These things I pray in your Saint Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sharon. We do not have anybody from citizens' comments, I believe. Consideration of approval of minutes from September 28th, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to approve of minutes?
Make motion to approve of minutes from September 28th.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, we've not heard your treasurer's support today, is there?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, we'll do the bills at the end, and we'll go then to the regular agenda items. Item 7A is consideration possible approval of action regarding the burn ban. I think we can leave it off for a while longer personally, but...
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's about to get to where we need to put it back down, because it's, it is getting dry again. But I will agree to leave it off for time being.
Okay, then no action on, on, uh, on item A. We do not have Lisa here. I didn't think she'd be here today. Item C is consideration possible proof of action regarding the agreement between Brown County and Allison Bass McGee L L P and payment of $5,000 in reference of redistricting of Brown County. Does anyone have any paperwork on that? The agreement for McGee was actually done back earlier this year.
It's done back in 18, actually. And then we re- reacclaimed it earlier this year. The only action that needs to be made is a PO for the $5,000 for the payment, initial payment. If there's anything after that, if they have to redistrict or redraw any lines, then there'll be some additional payments. So do you need us to put that in the, in the minutes to pay it? Or you just need someone to sign up, PO?
We just need a PO.
So there's not really any action needed to take?
Yeah, we've done all that, yeah.
There oughta be an agreement then, that you're gonna submit.
The agreements, we've already approved the agreements. So the only thing is, uh, payment of $5,000.
So there's actually no action needed at this time?
Yep.
And we just need somebody to submit a PO.
Okay.
I'll stop by and see.
Well, let's see. I think say we make a motion to allow the interpreter to issue a PO for $5,000?
No.
Can't do that?
I mean, you can.
That's what it is, did.
One of us is gonna have to sign it.
Okay.
I mean, that's what she said. All she needs is someone to come by and sign a PO for it.
Well, I'm just saying we were gonna authorize her to do it. Okay. If that won't work for you, then we'll just...
It's already been authorized.
Okay. I would just make a motion to allow her to, authorizing her to make the consent. That's all, Gary.
Okay.
All right, then we'll go to item, item D. Vance Hill Sheriff considers possible approval of action regarding employee changes.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Sheriff.
Oh, this has to do with my enforcement division. Uh, finally got to qualify deputy. I'm hiring Michael Sheedy at the rate of $38,261,04 to replace a position I've had since May with the termination of, or the termination of her employment, this Ashley Harris, for the same amount. So I'd like authorization to hire him. Actually, I did last week, so...
What, that was our...
I'm sure that he's gonna get the $2,000 raise, if that's appropriate.
That's our starting salary?
The $38,261,04 was my last year's starting salary. I know y'all voted to give the employees $2,000 a month, and I hope that y'all will allow that to go towards my starting salaries in the jail and law enforcement, too. I know that wasn't addressed, but...
Uh, we didn't address that individually, which we have in the paper, so...
But this employee was hired prior to the end of my, last year's budget. At the rate of $38,261,04. Hoping to get the $2,000 raise.
Oh, yeah, he will.
Is that the only change, Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
I move we've approved the employee changes in Sheriff's office.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Which brings us right on down to item E, Vance, which is consideration for clarification of possible action on the scope of work proposal with the L C R A.
Oh, yes, when I presented the scope of work last week to y'all, I didn't realize that there was an amended copy. It's, uh, called Scope of Work and Attachment A to the Scope of Work was the one that I presented last week. This one is entitled Additional Service Proposal. Commissioner Kelton signed this new agreement in the court last week, but we wanted to bring it to y'all and let y'all know that the document that we filed with the clerk's office is different now. Nothing's changed in, in the agreements at all. It's all this does is lays out a payment schedule and the schedule of the work to be performed. So we just wanted to re-present that to y'all, uh, so we'd be sure to be all working up.
And it allows a different person from L C R A to sign on, Mary Ann Corrigan. That was...
Yeah, that changed from the old part to the Christian cynical.
So is the one I have correct?
No, ma'am. I have two originals right here. So I guess at this point I will provide you one if they, if I prove it.
Well, do we need a motion to? I'll make a motion that we approve the, the Scope of Work Proposal, L C R A, to include the newest, the newer ones we signed, the updated versions.
Second.
I got it.
All right. Thank you, Larry. All in favor? Okay. Thank you, Vance.
Thank you, Vance.
You better thank y'all. I have the jail report of 163 minutes. And I will take y'all to copy this.
I think Valerie had one. Valerie had some also, or she was last week.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Item up is Jennifer Robeson, auditor. Eric Maucham, is that right?
Mahah, yes, sir.
Mahah, excuse me, with Hilltop Securities, well, Presentation of Infrastructure Improvement Financing Options. Mahah.
Yes, sir, the C is silent, but...
I didn't know. Forgive me, because I sure didn't know.
I might pass sort of one of these sides, maybe. Package. Good morning, Commissioners. It's been a few years since I've been out. I think last, 2015, so good to be out again. And we have some information here on the topic, on the agenda, about infrastructure financing for counties in general. And so the first packet, um, we put together a few financing types that, uh, Texas counties can enter into, the finance capital projects. And then the, the second is a set of numbers that we can discuss after that preliminary. But in that first packet, I get right into it. In general, you know, as a county, to finance projects over a longer period of time, there's your four financing options, four or five financing options that you see Texas counties, uh, consider when financing projects. And we have a couple bullet points of each of those types, and if you have any questions, please feel free. Um, start on the first page or page two. We have general obligation bonds. You're probably aware that with the election cycle, you can, uh, voters go to voters twice a year, the uniform election dates. And so every May or November, you have that option to issue G O bonds. Uh, requires voter approval. You know, with each election, the county, if you want to hold a bond election, you have to call a few boards, sometime in August or November, or sometime in February for the May. Um, and with the G O bonds, you're pretty, uh, the scope of the work is pretty broad. Use those bond dollars for, uh, a lot of projects in the county, with all, all spectacles. By state law, they're limited to 40-year repayment, typically, but you don't see counties finance for 40 years. You typically align them, the repayment term with the life of the asset, but you can't go 40 years. They are secured by the county's tax base. And so as an investor that would buy those bonds, that's what the county is pledging to repay the county's tax base. And that's, that's how the credit is derived when the investors look at the county. The county's obligated, so it's tax rate to pay those. And that would be on the INS side, INS tax rate. So the bottom bullet there is very important, is any noted bond would be outside the rollback calculation. So it preserves that income capacity, uh, would be under INS. And since it does have the county's tax pledge, it would be at what we consider lower interest rates in the bond market, because of more secure pledge and a volatile revenue stream or something like that. So those are your G O bonds. The next, page three, we talk about certificates qualification. A lot of the same characteristics as G O bonds, but with certificates, uh, it's, it's more of how you issue. That's the main difference. And with certificates, uh, the commissioners would, uh, post a notice in the newspaper, and then you wait a certain period of time. It used to be, it used to be 30 years, or, I'm sorry, 30 days. Um, you'd have to wait from that first publication to when the commissioners could come back and approve the debt. And that would give a, a time for petition. And if 5% of voters petition, those certificates, then it would have to go to general election if the commissioners choose to do so. And recently, the last session or so, they, they changed that to a 45-day notice, which is really the only change. And then it also has to be posted on the county website, that notice. And so just the way, um, certificates are issued is one of the key differences. And then you'll see here, and this is a little different for Texas cities, who can also issue certificates. For counties, if the county just pledges its tax rate, you can see in the bullet there, they're limited in the type of projects that can be financed. So if you pledge taxes only, we have listed there the jail, county buildings, land, judgment, construction of bridges are the only purposes that certificates can be used for if just the tax rate is pledged. Now, you have the option to add an additional pledge, and this is how cities have to finance certificates. They always have to have the dual pledge. But for a county, if you add an additional pledge, some other revenue stream in addition to the tax rate, you can see here, uh, you have a broader, um, availability on what those funds can be used for. So depending on what project the county would be considering to fund certificates, we'd have to determine which type of pledge to use.
So what pledge would we, what, what, what would be a pledge there? What would the county?
My understanding is this project would be courthouse and some other infrastructure.
Not much about courthouse.
More road, more road in camp.
More roads, okay.
Then courthouse.
More road improvement.
Yeah, no courthouse, and, uh, we got...
Pride and land.
With bridges.
Bridges, infrastructure of the county.
I think what he was asking is, when you said two sources?
Yes, sir.
What would be the second source?
Yeah, that, that would be the question, you know, what other source of revenue can the county pledge on its tax rate? It's more of a legal matter on how we set up the documents.
So what are examples of second sources of pledge?
You know, we have sales tax in some cases, uh, road and bridge funds, fees. You know, it's kind of you all who kind of determine what other pledge you'd like to pledge. But at the end of the day, typically, you'd set the tax rate for pay it. It's more of a legal document on if the tax rates, or if the revenues aren't sufficient, we're on set a tax rate. Typically, you're on set a tax rate. So we'd have to find some other revenue stream that county's comfortable pledging in that case. And like I said, at the end of the day, it has a tax pledge, so it's gonna be very similar to a G O bond. And from an investor's standpoint, a C O and a G O is really, there's no difference from an investor, because they both have a tax pledge.
So the interest rate will really probably be really, really close on either of the options.
Yeah, I get it. The times we'll reprice a G O and a C O next to each other, you're not gonna see any difference in the tax rate. It's just the mechanics and that pledge makes it a little more complicated on, on the line of the device. And then one thing we highlight here on the bottom, on page three, if there is a failed bond election, let's say, if the county, and this same for cities, you'd be prohibited from issuing C Os within the next three years. So that's, that's something that's...
For the same project, it's a...
Same project, yes, sir. Just something to point out. Page four, talk about tax notes, and this may be more applicable to this project. Tax notes, um, again, going back to the G Os and C Os, they also carry the town, uh, the county's tax pledge. So they're gonna have same interest rates as G Os and C Os. Outside of all that, would be supported from INS, not even though, uh, you can see that the, the biggest difference in tax notes in G Os and C Os, tax notes are limited to seven years. So state law, you have to repay those tax notes within seven years. And that, that's the main difference. I say that, the other difference is, you know, they don't require voter approval, and they're not subject to that petition process as a C O. So the way you'd issue, um, typically, tax notes, I know that the county has done tax notes in the past. We arrange for a buyer, and then bring it to the court, uh, for approval. That's how that would work. You approve that, and you have to repay it within seven years. So there's no petition process or voter approval for tax notes. You can see that the, for the bottom there, the, the purpose is, is pretty broad, construction, equipment, lands. Sounds like...
Well, we're looking to get...
Yes, sir. I think it sounds like it covers the projects that the county's considering. You know, you can pay it for other revenues, if there are some other revenues, but at the end of the day, it has a tax pledge, so... Now, last finding, uh, finding option, we listed page five, the last page, lease purchase financing. This is typically, you see this from counties for equipment. And, you know, so that's, that's always there. And, you know, the one item here is, it's more on the M and O side. It's not gonna be INS, subject to appropriation of payment each year, uh, from the M and O budget. So we'll be on the INS. Sometimes, uh, with all that, it, it, all that, you say, Texas, you go through the Attorney General. A lot of times, the lease purchase is a lot, uh, it just depends how the document is drafted. But, um, it, it is on the M and O side, subject to appropriation. And then you can see some, there's, the leases are all a little different with buyout provisions and call dates and things like that. They're set to kind of read font print, but, um, they are on the M and O, not INS. Not, not subject to voter approval or the petition process. And you can see different, you'll see different repayment terms on all that equipment and things like that, so... It is another finance option the county's have, so...
Well, I would suspect we're talking either tax notes or C Os, is what I would suspect we were...
I don't know. And that count is tax note pretty bad.
And we were talking, are you thinking more like a five-year note?
We did the last one, five.
What, five?
Seven.
Yeah, probably five, but seven, we didn't get it.
We can do it, we can get that out.
I think five would be, I mean, we're gonna talk about it, it's maybe something to do with five years.
Yes, sir. Yeah, back in 2017, the county did $530,000 in tax notes. The final payment on those were 2023, so that was a six-year tax note.
That was on, that was on the McKinstry, I believe. We, we did a tax note before that for infrastructure, and we paid it off like the year before last.
Something like that. Yeah, you're talking about the McKinstry one there, you said?
Yes, sir, that was $530,000 in 2017. My information said it was just county buildings, it doesn't go into...
Yeah.
But that, that, that one pays off in 2023. Then, you know, the county has certificates from 2015. Those pay off in 2031. That actually might lead to the second packet. Put together some information on the county debt. We're gonna have some preliminary numbers. On the second packet, um, we put together existing county debt on column B. And there was a large payment this year. There's quite a drop in the debt service starting in 2021.
And it's in jail.
Yes, sir, it might've been that. The drop from, the county's debt payment dropped from 1.48 million down to, you know, see, column B, 2021, to 700,000. And then there's another decline, starting in 2024. It drops from 700,000 down to 582. And that's the retirement of that tax note in 2017. So you can see there's a decline in debt service projected in the future. One note we've been looking at, and, you know, one thing that may, that's not on the agenda tonight or today, it may be something the county might want to look at, is the C Os currently are at a 3.32%, and then a 5.04%. And today's market, if you want to follow, interest rates are historically level levels. And so, uh, there is some opportunity if the county would like to look at refinancing those. Back when we sold those in 2015, we, we gave the county the option to repay those or refinance those at any time. So, uh, in today's market, that may be something the county might want to look at. But as it stands, column B shows the existing payments. So if there were any type of refinancing, uh, it could be an opportunity to lower the payment shown in column B there. And that, that's something... Yes, sir, and that, that's the whole reason I brought it up. If there is a desire to issue tax notes, it might be worth putting a, we have, we could do tax notes to refinance. We'd have to do general obligation refunding. And so we have, we would offer two, we'd offer tax notes and then refunding bonds to investors. You take bids on both, and you could do it all at the same time.
Yeah, if you figure you want to move infrastructure and then add that bridge, tell that.
Yes, sir.
Probably make the payment less.
So that, that's an option I just wanted to...
We got all the eggs around the basket, too.
And, you know, you could, you might have one bank that buys them both, or one buys one and one buys the other, and so that would make the petition process. You know, typically, we do a private placement to where we offer it to banks in the city or region, or throughout the state, and play a bid on it. Rather than go out to the public market, you're able to save some of those costs.
We've got two banks here that probably have interest.
Yes, sir, I know they both have competed in the past. Do that in transition there. And then, also on that first page, we, we did a what-if scenario, and we just picked $2 million for infrastructure, that's column C, D, and E. We're using above-market interest rate, just to be a little conservative and so on. That's schedule one. Said to fund $2 million in tax notes with a seven-year repayment, it's about 370,000 a year. That's like column B there. Then you see column F would be the total payment with the existing debt plus the, the 2 million. About a million dollars, dropping down to 950, 960,000. Now, given the county's tax base, that's about a 1.2 cents or so on the INS. That would be calculated, column B would be, um, be about 1.2% increase needed in INS to support that 2 billion. Maybe, the second page is very similar. The only difference, we said, we structured the first two years on the tax note to wrap around the $700,000 existing payment for the first few years. And then when the county's debt dropped, 2024, then the payment on the tax note would increase. And so what this does, this levels out column F. So it'd be about a million dollar a year total debt compared to prior page, the first two years, the debt would be a little higher. So that's, it's what we call a wraparound structure. It structures all the debt in aggregate instead of individually. And so just a way to maybe shave that tax rate down to about a penny or so, that's the second scenario. But you are going to pay a little more interest, uh, because you're deferring a little principal nearer here, so... Just two options, and then, again, like I said, this 2 million is just a plug number. We can certainly run, uh, different amounts and different payment terms, if the county would like to take a look at that.
Let's say, Jennifer.
Well, just a reminder that we did have to replace the elevator in the courthouse, so we do have some courthouse infrastructure.
Well, I do, yeah.
Yeah.
The bulk of it's gonna be...
Right, right, but the bulk of it's gonna be...
Oh, yeah, I know, just...
And then...
The elevators, we're not gonna do that, make a remodel in the courthouse for a while, for a while.
No, that's, no, that's fine. And then part of our infrastructure cost could be that additional, um, surprise cost on the radios. There was about $28,000, I believe, in what they come in. They, uh, call the infrastructure cost as parts of radio project goes. And so instead of depleting our equipment account, we could pay for a little bit of that with our note. But, I mean, 2 million, I believe, is, was the total that we came up with in our budget for the job.
And we also discussed, we have a pretty fair fund balance. You're not interested, you don't feel comfortable taking some of the fund balance rather than borrowing money? I mean, I just, just a thought, just throwing it out there.
As the interest rate, I would say leave the fund balance alone.
Right, this is almost free.
You would concur? I would just say, how many so is? So we, if I have a wild estimate, what an elevator would cost, if that had been discussed?
What was that?
Don't get me in line. There was a, oh, so for some reason, 500,000 is stuck in my head. I don't know that that's right. There was, quote, it was expensive, that's all I remember. I don't know what 500,000 is. I'd have to go look, take out Jim.
Again, they can get bids on it, yeah.
Right, yeah, we'll have to get bids on it.
If you did that, then you're talking 1.5 divided four ways is... As left as he did two, you had to save it back to 500 for the courthouse. It's 1.5 divided by four. So that's like 325.
Yeah, it's a little over 300,000.
325.
I was hoping to do a precinct, which is great. And I got a bridge, it cost me 250,000 times 70,000, so that's there. So that won't be any major, I mean, it'd be a major bootstraps, but they won't be able to go out to them and take the payment like I was hoping to do. This one, just, just kind of getting out of a trap.
Right.
Leaks will be back, we're ahead operating one weekend, so...
And Eric was right, if, you know, as far as the choices go, I would think a tax note would be more preferred.
Well, that's what it looked like to me, in my layman's terms. I'm not any kind of financial genius until then. And look, it looked like...
Well, for something we showed up, you had it.
St. Liston, no, Robert Paul. Next restriction, freedom to do what you want to do with the money.
Yes, sir. Now, if the county felt like the seven-year repayment was tough to do, then we would... Typically, the decision between tax notes and C Os falls within the repayment term. That's typically how we find it. If you go on with this certificate. We felt like the seven-year or some other payment was too burdensome on the tax rate, then we'd put C Os.
Well, if we get 2 million, 300,000 for each precinct, that would leave 800,000. We need 300 for, said, uh...
Radios.
So I'd leave 500,000 for a elevator.
Elevator. We, surely goodness, we'd get elevators for cheap.
I think hydraulic brands aren't, aren't that expensive enough?
I don't know, yeah.
That's what's in there.
Is that what kind of recommend put, that kind back in there? We just have to find out, but I don't have a clue.
I don't have any major elevator makers there in the country. I don't know. Just like here, maybe, where you're crashed, or something.
There's several elevator companies around. I don't know, I'm, I'm sure there's several more installation companies, so... If you're not just stuck with, with one, like POTUS or Bison Crump or...
And so what, and so what...
Brand the elevator.
So what are they saying about the elevator?
What else is better with it?
Yeah.
What's the major problem with it, since we did that work up?
Man, I tell you, Joel can keep anything running. Joel can keep anything running, if you try to fix it.
I probably have a little liability issue there, though, since I'm not a certified elevator mechanic. I've heard it was obsolete or the...
Obsolete? Obsolete, something about.
They're called all the time.
Obsolete, because I think some.
There's a motherboard in it, some computer and part of it is motherboard.
Yeah, the motherboard is gone, yeah.
Surely that 1840 elevator that had a computer in it.
Maybe the board is one.
I don't think they can get the parts.
Well, yeah, they can't get the parts.
Well, remember, didn't we just spend 50,000?
Well, that's what I thought when we got the email. But they're saying that it's going to have to be replaced within the year.
Who's they, they, they?
They, they.
The guy that wants to sell us if they want.
Well, actually, we may have to go out, we may have to go out and do some more work.
How much did we spend really?
Well, I don't know, but I think they just replaced the door, didn't they?
Yeah.
Did we spend 50,000?
I don't know, it was a lot.
Because the door was going to fall in on someone.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was on the door.
I mean, it's probably something anybody could do, but if we have to certify it, I'm sure they'd touch on the elevator.
Yeah.
We have to probably have them insured out the door, who knows? I think a lot of those are inappropriate. So, anyway.
Were you out there?
We're out in the Dallas area.
So if you take 2 million, it's efficient.
Well, like I said, that just kind of fixes me back to where I was at before, personally, but.
What's the city doing over there?
Radio project.
They're getting capital lease, just like us.
We just have some infrastructure items that didn't get covered otherwise, right? The initial equipment and stuff.
Yeah, just that change in that plan that.
I mean, we have budgeted enough to cover it, it just drains the equipment fund for the shares to work. So if we can use some of this money, that would help alleviate that.
We can do what we want right here, but at some point, we've got to. I'm going to start putting more money out of our tax time into the road, into the.
Yeah, yeah, tax notes are mandatory.
Because that's what we did last time, we did that paid it off, we're doing it again. We still can't keep up, the other work is supposed to be done on maintenance of those paid roads and being fridges between them. But that's what else I might go in. You know, if you like, I got this year, but.
And for.
With Larry, thank you.
Taxpayer point of view, I'd a lot rather see my money out there getting something done and laying it up CD drawing point zero, nothing in it.
Certainly a good time to borrow, not invest.
Yes, sir.
And we are charged with keeping our rope up in our precinct. That's probably a lot of what we, all we realize we do, but.
We're charged with doing, no, we're not obligated by law to do it. We're going to do that while we're here.
Larry, have you anything to say?
How do we take action on either right now, do we?
It's a next item.
It is on a big property, not on, not on.
We don't have to take it, we don't have to do anything today, but it is there, we won't discuss it.
Should y'all decide to do this, then it'll take, how much time do you say it'll take to show this?
Yeah, I don't mix that. So on the tax note, we typically would want, we would have to develop a bid package on all the terms, and then send that to banks, and let them look at it for about two weeks. And then we like to have those bids back about a week before commissioners, four weeks a day.
A lot of the stuff that we want to do, we don't have to wet the spring for summer anyways, so that'd be fine.
Well, and if we're going to talk about refinancing, that's not on the agenda if we want to do the, we said the other, the other. So that would have to be agenda.
Put it all together.
Yes, sir, and that's, that's just one way to save on some of the administrative costs of, you know, packing everything together, but you're not obligated.
Well, like you said, right now, it's a good time to refinance something like that.
Yeah. I, I would say, you know, there's a big rush right now for everybody to refinance before the election.
Yeah.
I'll say that, but after November, we don't know what the bond markets will look like. But, you know, if things are still good, and, you know, rates could basically blow in spring. But, you know, it may be something, we wait till after the election, see how the market reacts, and then we can quickly put together a term sheet to refinance instead of dating, refinancing before. That's something we can stay in contact on, if you like.
We also remember the 2008 election.
Elections can do different things from markets.
Well, I think it's safe to say that it's not going to go lower than it is now.
That's a good point, probably not.
Yeah, and so, I mean, it's not like you're waiting, hoping it's going to go down. The rate's going to go down, they're not going to go lower than they are, and so there's.
That's right, and these, the debt now is currently called, so the county has, sometimes we have to wait till it's called in. So back in 2015, we priced that in to where it gives the county a feeling to refinance anytime you want. And so really, the other option is to wait and keep making payments at the rates they're at.
And there was no penalty for?
There's no penalty, that's, that's the important part, is, so we could pay them off tomorrow if the county wanted to do something, so.
Might be a good idea to, I think, before the election, I think.
Go ahead.
Just before the election, you know, I'm, I'm the last patient without the election. But I thank you to come out all right. As conservatives, I don't know, you never know, there's lots of good balls out there.
So my question, Jennifer, so is there something, if we're, if we're talking about doing this and refinancing, do we need to do that at the same time? Is that, is that?
No, if, like you said, if you took action on item G today, we could come back to our next meeting and talk to the, about the refinancing and then Eric go out and do his package together. It would just, Larry.
I want the tax notes to be a little bigger.
It would require, the 2015, there's one of them that's tax exempt and one's taxable. So we'd have to do a general obligation refunding bond tax exempt, general obligation refunding bond taxable, and then a tax note. So it'd be three different actions by the court for three different debt types. We can do them all at the same time, you can do them separately, there's really no, you don't have to package them with the tax notes. So if the project, if the dollars on the tax notes aren't needed until the spring, I would say, you know, we might want to hold off until you have good estimates on the projects, and then you can always issue the tax notes. Refinancing, that's more of a market timing decision. Now, if you all said we wanted to do the tax notes this fall, then we might want to wait and see how the election goes and then do the refinancing. But if the tax notes are in the spring, then maybe, I think we might want to look into refinance because we don't know what rates will be. When is the November reading set?
Well, we may have one. I think we're going to have one next week or not.
We've got, we've got one, we have one, we have one.
We will meet before then, surely, till the house.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll, we meet here every week right now.
I mean, we need to confirm with bond council because since they'd be GL bonds and they have the tax pledge already, sometimes they'll tell us they want to let the debt control rate or payment could be denied. But they may be comfortable with doing that. But we would need probably three weeks, heads up. That way, we can arrange for the bids to bring it to the court. So we'd have to pick a date at least three weeks from now. And then the other method is what we call a parameter, where the court would set parameters. You'd say, we want to save at least X, at least $400,000. And then you'd have six months to watch the market. So you could put the parameters in place, and then we'd have six months to sell the bonds. But you'd be delegating authority typically to the county auditor to finalize everything in the future if those parameters are met. So that may be one way to put parameters in place before the election, see how the election turns out. And then if interest rates go low, go ahead and complete it at a later date. That's, that's something, a lot of the refinancing we do are through that parameter method. And you set parameters, you know, we don't want to sell more than the debt outstanding. We don't want to extend the payments. But then the most important parameter is, here's what we want to save at minimum. And if any of those parameters aren't met, then, you know, the county auditor would not have the authority to proceed. Another option.
Any legal advice for Mark? I mean, you know, he's, he's no stake involved.
It makes sense.
I know that refinancing is not on the agenda, but since we talked about debt, it plays into the question of the new debt. So maybe something the county wants to consider a future meeting, refinancing.
We'd say that at a future meeting, we need to have separate agenda items for refinancing.
Got a question on him right now, before we take, before we go to item G, which, which is considered as possible approval of financing for infrastructure improvements. Does anybody want to make a, take any action on that today? Are we talking about 2 million, at five years, what are we talking about? And that was, that's what I think we discussed it on.
Yeah, you figure the refinancing with the, what? Show what you figured, Mr. Mah.
As it stands, column B does not include a refinance, but I do have some numbers we ran. We show we could save approximately on about $50,000 a year. If we refinance the 2015A and the 2015B, it's about 50,000 a year in savings.
That's pretty significant to me.
But we would reduce column B about 50,000 with refinancing, 12%.
That's, that's a no-brainer.
I mean, it really is, given that those rates are at a 3.32% and a 5%. And in today's market, we're around 2%.
Yeah. So anyway, what, what do we need to make a tax note or whatever before including that? What do we settle on for the infrastructure improvement?
It was right at 2 million.
Right at 2.
Well, this is.
And that was before the radio deal, though.
But, but you don't, you don't have to, you don't have to add up a total because actually, when you refinance this, that's not part of the 2 million. You can't do, you can't, you can't, you can't take the amount from the old notes and include it in the 2 million.
We can do it all at the same time.
Go ahead, do it.
No, no, you, you, those are separate transactions. That's what he was saying, is you can't, you can't refinance in the same process as the 2 million. They have to be separate transactions.
Okay.
But we can do it all at the same time.
You can all, you can.
We just do three separate transactions.
Yeah, that's right.
You can bid of all of it.
Basically doing the same thing.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right, right.
One of them is reducing column B.
Yeah.
If we go, the refunding would be reducing column B, and then the tax notes would be, you know, what we see on column B.
Like that, that's 700 something thousand on a separate deal.
Yes, sir.
The 2 million, that covering the radios and all that stuff.
Yeah.
And, and leaving some for that.
Well, it's leaving 300,000 for precinct if you're saving up back for the radios and guestimation for the elevator.
You know, you know, the elevator doesn't cost 500,000.
We have a way to get, we can have it. We could have, yeah, it's one. Little insurance.
100,000. Elevator.
Elevator was one.
Well, that's, that's, that's true.
Oh, yeah.
If that's true, then, then the 2 million would probably vary pretty very much.
They didn't, no, I guess you did.
Not at all.
So that's, that's, that gives precinct the next 100,000.
There you go.
Yeah, 100,000.
He's saying now the elevator's only 100, and then, and then the radios, which is 30, that's 4. So anyway, that still leaves over 300, that's great.
Yeah.
That's six.
For five years.
Yeah, one.
For five years.
Yeah.
Five years is good.
Five minutes.
I'm sorry, I'll put five years out there.
I'm all about the shorter period and just get it, get it right.
Because we might at that point be.
Oh, I can run. Well, five year would be.
Figure out.
Motion. So five year, if we're looking at, that's schedule one, instead of 370,000, about 415,000. Schedule one on column E, and the seven-year, we showed about 370,000 with assumed interest rates. Five years is about 415,000. And then if we do the refinancing, you know, estimate about 50,000 will be saved.
Yeah, in five years, that's 250,000.
Actually, the refinancing.
More, we get them.
The, the savings would go through 2031, yes. And so it's about 500,000 in total savings, about 50,000 a year or so.
Yeah.
Isn't that crazy that 2031, that they took? That sounds, that sounds so far off, but surely.
Where do you get the factory go?
Said I'm going to remain out here to 2015, hard to lose it.
I would make a motion, if no else is, we, we look at doing 2 million in tax notes over a five-year period for infrastructure improvements.
Is that a motion?
Is that a proper motion? Is that a proper motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yes.
I'll say.
Got a second, I got a motion in a second. Any other discussion on all of this? Now, this is, we're going to go out, we're going to get numbers, right? We got, we're not committed, correct? I made it to looking into.
No, 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 you're committing this stuff.
Well.
Is that out there?
Well, hang on just a second. We are on G. F was a no-action item, I'm sorry, so G. So let me, okay, explain that.
I was going to make one comment, you know, we can go out to bid for 2 million. And then once you get the bids back, you can always downsize. That's not a problem.
That doesn't make our bidders mad?
No, now, if we upsize it, you know, or if you take bids and then you have a good set of bids, and then the county decides, no, we don't want to, then, you know, next time you go out for bids, the banks will kind of be, well, hesitant, I think.
Yeah.
But you can always, you know, if you go out, you say, we're going to sell 2 million, and then you get bids back and say, well, we actually want to sell one and a half, that's not a problem. But it takes when you upsize it.
They just do that. Crawfish, they don't like it.
Yes, sir. Now, I think, do all the credit work, and submit a bid package, and then the county says, no, we don't want to accept. And that's your obligation to do that. We put in all the bids, that's, you know, the county, you can reject all bids if you choose to do so. But you have some of the banks that want to shy away the next time.
And in the past, we've never done that, but I'm just saying, we're not, the thing is, you'll say, I'll point out, and then we're not, we're not totally tied in. And we, we're committed to move forward.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I mean, the court will have to vote on that if you die.
Is that, is that proper? Does that go with you, Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second.
F was no action.
F was no action, that was a, that was a presentation he did, and then, I'm sorry, I moved to G, consideration of possible approval of financing for infrastructure improvements, I made the motion.
To what?
To go out for tax notes, five years for 2 million.
Go out for tax?
Or. We're going to bid for that, we're going to.
Bid for tax notes, get 2 million dollars, or 2 million.
2 million, five years, is what.
To approve Hilltop Securities to seek bids for tax notes for 2 million dollars for five years.
And Shaw seconded it.
Yeah.
And we were having further discussion.
Refin, separately, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We need to put that on the end of another item, another day, and get that back up there.
I'll be on the very next one.
So we can either, the county can either on the refinance, do the parameter, where you set the parameters prior to taking bids, or we could take bids and then bring it forward, so.
Okay.
Maybe the next gen item, we all can discuss which method you'd like to. If you want to set the parameters beforehand, we work with bond counsel to have those to you. And it'll be on the agenda, take action on the parameters if you choose to do so.
Maybe we can buy after that. You guys set the parameters too hard, right?
You don't have to.
That's only if you do it that way.
Yes, sir.
Are you okay with that?
No, I don't like it.
Okay. You can just tell by the look on your face that there's something, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's go back to item G, though, we've, we've never voted on it yet, we have a motion in a second. Is that, and this other is going to be a separate issue. So any other discussion, like if I call a vote? Okay, is that for, for far? Sharon, that was four of us for it, okay. Okay, and that was, we'll have to get that back on the agenda, and we can, we can touch on that right now, are we going, we need to meet next week?
Yeah.
13th?
Yeah.
So we may be back on to the 13th then, if that's true. Would you rather be here for this one?
I don't think so, I would, I think it's just a matter of, I mean, doing the right thing.
You said you weren't in favor of the parameters.
I don't like the parameters.
That sounds, so you'd rather just move forward and see what's out there?
Well, because the parameters, you guys are setting certain stipulations as to whether or not I myself authorize these refinancing, and I would just say, y'all just offer us the refinancing.
Oh.
Because, shush, because it's, it makes sense, first of all, to just, to me, it makes sense to go ahead and do it. I mean, we're paying 3.32 and 5.04, and we could just be paying two.
Yeah, that's complicated thing, we get to the refinancing, I think it's a good bill.
So.
It'll be, I can maybe get another.
Significant cost to do it.
No, not if we go to the private placement, because we go out to public markets, you have to get a bond raising, pay underwriter, but private placement, you're just paying bond, council, financial advisor, attorney general, and sometimes the bank provides, and may have a council fee, but it just depends.
Well, Eric will get you back on the agenda then for Tuesday, and she's gonna lay it out for two different, two separate motions to do the refi, to look into the refinancing.
So would you like to have parameters in place, just in case the court?
I'd say just, just to refinance.
Then if that's the case, if the court would like us to, I'd circle of November 9th to do the tax note, and we could just bring the refinance same day.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
So do we still need to meet and authorize and do that, though, next week, right?
Yeah, we, we got B O D.
Well, no, you're not, to authorize what?
Go, to go look into the refinance, I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't it authorize?
I don't think you have to authorize, kind of look into it.
The county auditor can just say, we, we have an engagement with the county, we're a financial advisor, we can do that for you.
If there's no action, then they can get started on the process.
So then we don't need to be on the agenda.
You don't have to, unless you just wanna confirm, go out and bid, we can, based on county auditor direction, we can go out and bid for the.
We don't, yeah.
Don't start on that, yes or no? On the agenda or not?
No.
No, okay.
Bid on the night?
It'll be three transactions, it'll be tax exempt refunding, taxable refunding, and tax note.
Right. So there'd be. Three separate agenda items on the night.
Taxable, and non-taxable, and refund.
Some of that money in 2015 went, and I forget, it was the juvenile center, or?
Yeah, there's the courthouse, juvenile center, and the jail.
I think some of the juvenile center was deemed taxable because of the use of the dollar, that's why it was not taxable.
Because we're leasing that property, yes, sir.
Yeah, it was the rental property.
So we have to refinance that taxable rates.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that's why it's two separate.
All right, Eric, I guess that means that we're done with those items for today.
Any questions, I know Jennifer has our contact, but we'll, we'll go to work.
Thank you very much. Uh, that takes us to item H, Gary Worley, Commissioner Precinct One, consideration of possible approval of employee changes.
As everybody knows, we haven't had any, any jail crews since April. We have found one gentleman that's going to work temporarily. So I have Harold Sellers starting today, and he's a temporary full-time, 12 hours, $12 an hour to be paid from the COVID funds. So.
A motion, have a second?
Second.
Another second from Larry, we'll get, wait a minute, she's out of the room.
Recorder's on.
Well, hang on a little.
All right, all right.
Well, now, she reminded me last week that she's out of the room, I'm, I will wait.
Who, who made the motion?
Gary, yeah, but I'm gonna wait on her. We had this discussion last week.
You got trouble? She get in trouble?
I asked her, I said, I didn't, because I always understood what everything I heard, they can't conduct before that, and so I'm all like, even though the recorder's going, I'm waiting till she gets back. We'll go back to that, that's all.
All right.
I'm still looking for another employee, we had one leave us, and we've been kinda asking around, is that the proper way to look for a kill?
Supposed to be on the catalog, so.
Well, we need to do that, I guess, who takes you to the website, we need one, we can use another hand in the same, for the same situation, precinct two, again. All right, correct to item eight, Gary, precinct one, consideration of possible approval of employee changes.
I move the court approve the hiring of a temporary full-time person for precinct one, $12 an hour to be paid from the COVID funds.
Second.
Second, Larry, any other question, all in favor? Are you caught up, Sharon?
Yes.
I didn't realize you'd left the room, so. And item I is Wayne Shaw, sorry, ma'am. Okay, item I, Commissioner Shaw, precinct three, consideration of possible approval of employee changes.
Due to the COVID deal, we lost our jail crew too, we found two part-time, full-time temporaries. A full-time temporary.
What is it, part-time?
Anyway.
That's full-time temporary.
Full-time temporary. Temporary, full-time, to be paid $12 an hour out of the COVID funds. On his name, Ben Hutchins, and he started last Friday, the 29th. And the other one is Terry Browder, and he starts today.
Was that a motion?
I'll make a motion, we, we okay with hiring of these two temporary full-time hands.
Motion and a second, any other question, all in favor? Okay. I need to, I request we go back and pay mine now as COVID funds, because they're not being paid from the COVID funds. So what I need to do is get that done, Jennifer. Can I go back? Can I go back and do the retroactive?
I'll go one, all right.
Which one is that?
I was wondering the first name, Hutchins, Ben Hutchins, yeah, thank you, Ben Hutchins, Greg Browder.
I believe I sent it that way.
But, I mean, you know, it's, yeah, it's.
Oh.
The one you got a sign.
The one that he did for Gary.
You want to do it for Gary?
She got it, okay. Now, we have, we have yet to pay the bills.
What kind? This is not an agenda item, but it's just, it's an item for discussion.
Color.
Yep.
On this G O deputy situation, you know, they're getting our G O deputies at least one day a week, and sometimes it ends up two. But I stand there wanting to go mow the yard and all that, and I, I don't have a real problem with it, except we're paying those guys. It's somewhere or another, we need to, let's give the sheriff department to pay those daily wages when they use it. We're paying somebody when they're not working for us.
Well, let's back up against her, because they're doing COVID functions when they're doing that too, right?
Yeah.
When they're pulling them off to do the screening, they're actually doing for COVID.
Our salary fund.
Between y'all and the sheriff and Ann.
That's what he was asking, that he was asking, should he talk to the treasurer?
True, she's HR.
Okay, because that's, that's, that's a COVID related activity when they're doing that.
They take their salaries when they do that out of the COVID money.
So when he pictured about that, it may be retroactive, retroactive, I'd like to on the.
Make a note on the time sheet, if they're working.
All right, we'll have to go find them and talk to them.
I think you'd have a hard time getting them to agree to.
Bills?
You know, I, I don't have, you know, nothing against them, but we do not get to use our hands, and we're charging them.
Well, instead of, instead of getting into an issue between y'all and the sheriff's department about what you're paying, what you need to do is, on those days that they work at the courthouse, you need to, COVID needs to pay for that, not you need to pay for that.
Well, that's fine, just as long as I don't have to.
Wouldn't that be easier?
If that's proper, I could be.
COVID is, that's actually, that's actually a reimbursement.
Couple of weeks.
Well, around the term COVID funds, is that a reimbursement?
Well, there was a cash to a point, and after that, it becomes reimbursement, right?
I don't know.
We got X number of dollars cash, that's right. And once that's expended, then it goes into reimbursement, is that correct, sir?
I think when we go over that 20%, I think, well, we go to front and pass that and be reimbursed.
Well, did anybody know we were over 20%?
We were getting close last time you. We weren't there, that's the reason it brought me by. Bob was the one that brought me up to date on that one time.
They need to be keeping up, and the day they work up here, then it needs to be reimbursed for that money.
Okay. Shaw, have you had a chance to preserve the bills? You, Larry, Gary, you ready to make a motion? Anybody ready to make a motion on the bills?
Somebody's supposed to pay the bills in my, my.
Any other discussion, all in favor? And so next Tuesday, we need to meet, do we still need to meet Tuesday?
Have a regular.
Okay, so Tuesday, we will have a meeting.
Your captain. Yes.
I guess I'll be playing the germs then.